All right, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, July 19th, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For attendance purposes, please show Commissioners Wade, Hench, Townsend, Craig, and Elliott present with Padron an excused absence. Next agenda item is item number three, public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to discuss any issue with the Planning and Zoning Commission, now is the opportunity, as long as it's not on the agenda. Anybody interested in seeing no rush up to the podium? That would be a no. Item number four under Development Items, case number REZ23-0004. The location is 614, 622, and 630 Orchard Court. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 1.63 acres of land from low-density, single-family residential zone to a planned development overlay to Riverfront Crossings Orchard Zone. And Kirk, is this yours?
Yes, it is, standing in for Ann, who wrote the staff report. So, don't be confused. We're talking about a rezoning for land near Orchard Court. Part of it has come before you before, so it's a matter of looking at it again. So, let me move on. Is the color off on your guys' screen, or can you see it okay?
It's fine, it's kind of a funky rust color.
Looks like autumn.
Yes, it's very autumnal.
Fortunately, the rezoning map is relatively straightforward. So, that's the only part where it really might throw you off. But, so what we're looking at is this 1.67 or 63 acres right here that's currently zoned, low-density, single-family, or RS5 with an OPD, or Planned Development Overlay. It currently has a couple multifamily buildings on it, and uses to the northwest and south are primarily single-family areas. To the northeast and east, you have larger multifamily buildings being redeveloped under the Riverfront Crossings Code. To the northeast is redeveloping, but it is currently under construction. And then to the east, you have that existing multifamily building. And the zoning does largely reflect that. So, again, to the northeast, you have Riverfront Crossings West Riverfront, or RFCWR. You also have that a little further to the east, but directly abutting this property to the east is zoned Riverfront Crossings Orchard, RFCO, and that is what is being proposed for this current site. To the south, you also have RFCO that was previously rezoned. And then to the west and north, you have medium-density, single-family residential, or RS8. So, in terms of background for this site, it's been an ongoing process, but it really started in 2016 when the downtown Riverfront Crossings Master Plan was amended to include the Orchard sub-district. So, that was not one of the original districts included in the Riverfront Crossings Plan. It was added later. And then in 2017, the form-based code was updated to also have an Orchard district that corresponds to this area shown. It's on the west side of the map. You can kind of see it in a brown color, south of the railroad, west of Orchard. The purpose of it was really to encourage residential redevelopment and to serve as a transition between higher-intensity mixed-use areas along South Riverside Drive, and then lower-intensity, single-family residential neighborhoods to the west. The first building to actually be rezoned of this in 2017 was 627 Orchard Court. So, that's the property to the east that was redeveloped as multifamily uses. That building replaced older, higher-intensity development, kind of similar to what was located on this site as well. In 2018, a portion of Orchard Court and Benton Street were rezoned to the RFCO. So, those are the properties to the south that have not been redeveloped yet. That did include a conditional zoning agreement. And then last year, in 2022, a portion of what is the current site, the subject property, and those properties to the south was proposed to be rezoned to RFCO. So, that would include, again, like I said, properties that are zoned RS5 with an OPD, and properties that are already zoned RFCO with the purpose of amending that conditional zoning agreement that was part of that. That was, that did fail at city council with a vote of four in support of it and three against it, but it didn't have a supermajority, which was required due to a protest petition. So, what we're talking about, I'll kind of go through the current proposal and how that's different from that previous proposal, but it's helpful to see this on a map as well. So, in the image on the left, you can see that first property that was rezoned to RFCO, that was the 627 Orchard Court. On the right side of this screen, in 2018, was the portion to the south that was rezoned initially with the conditional zoning agreement. And then on this next slide, you can see the failed 2022 rezoning to RFCO. So, that included the subject property we're considering today, as well as the properties to the south. When that failed to win a supermajority, they have returned for just this north portion of that site, which is the only portion that hasn't been rezoned to RFCO of the portion shown in the Riverfront Crossings Master Plan. So, it wouldn't touch the previous conditional zoning agreement to the south. So, in terms of the proposed zoning, again, being rezoned to, or being proposed to rezon to Riverfront Crossings Orchard, which was created to implement the master plan, again, forms a transition with a goal of being complementary in mass and scale to adjacent homes. So, it is a form-based zone. It primarily regulates by scale and form. It does also secondarily regulate use, but it's mostly focused on that form. And so, to that end, this zone would allow cottage homes, row houses, townhouses, and then apartment and multifamily buildings. It could also allow live-work townhouses as well. And when I say that it regulates primarily by form, when it's talking about density, there is no density requirement in Riverfront Crossings. Instead, it regulates by the maximum height, which is three stories. It does regulate by the number of bedrooms, so it's capped at three bedrooms, where no more than 20% of units may contain those three bedrooms. There is no bonus height in this zone, because it's intended to be a transition from the properties to the west, to the Riverfront Crossings, to the east. And then above the second story, there is a 10-foot step back that's built into it as well, to kind of mitigate that height. In addition, there's a requirement that there's a 30-foot setback from adjacent, single-family residential zones as well. So, that would apply to the west property line. In terms of the development approval criteria that we look at for rezonings, we primarily look at consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with existing neighborhoods. So, with regards to the comprehensive plan, like I said, the Orchard sub-district in the downtown Riverfront Crossings Master Plan is the area that we're looking in. You can see the map on the left again on the screen. It was intended specifically to encourage redevelopment of the area, primarily because it creates, in the original staff report, they noted that it creates an unpleasant environment for walking and biking. So, the duplexes that are currently along Orchard Court have auto-oriented frontages with large garages and driveways. There are also some older, single-family homes to the south that have no street access or frontage or pedestrian access. So, it does create some challenges for the sites, which is why in the master plan objectives, it is redevelopment of the site. And one of the reasons a form-based zone was used for this site was because not having the density cap would encourage the redevelopment of the existing properties that are on the site. But, the form-based standards that are incorporated as part of that, including the height limit, things like that, that I talked about, that is encouraged, or that is created to try and create the transition. So, that's kind of the secondary criteria for this. And in terms of height limits, just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about transitions, this is three stories. The properties to the west can have three stories as well, but they're single-family residential. To the east, you can have a larger variety of uses. That can be four or five stories, depending on bonus height. So, it does kind of create that step up in terms of height. It also does allow more uses than you might see in a typical, like, an RS5 or RS8 zone, but it has more restrictions than it does for the west Riverfront Zone to the east. So, it really does create that transition. And then on top of that, with the form-based zone, it has higher design quality standards as a way to kind of offset the increased density and to make sure that it does remain appropriate with surrounding uses. So, in this case, the rezoning would specifically implement the master plan that was imagined for the site, and this is, in fact, the only zone that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan as it's currently adopted. In terms of compatibility with existing neighborhood, I kind of talked about the ways that it forms a transition, and that's also built into the building type standards as well that I previously mentioned. But I've already mentioned the setbacks, the height limits, the step backs as well. So, all of those things kind of work together to create the transition from properties to the west to the east. Now, another factor on the site is transportation and access. So, as part of the 2018 rezoning that rezoned the properties to the south, they did determine that the intersection of Benton Street and Riverside Drive would operate at acceptable levels of service. However, where Orchard Street meets Benton Street, it would be unacceptable during peak hours. That being said, the 2018 rezoning for the southern properties only expected an additional 20 to 30 trips during peak hours, and so they didn't believe that signalization was needed at that time. However, with the proposed rezoning, it would include the north portion of the site, so it does increase the traffic that would be expected at that intersection, which would really bring it to more traffic generation, bring it to unacceptable levels. So, as part of recommendations for rezoning, staff does recommend signalization of Benton Street and Orchard Street. It would also likely require intersection improvements, such as turn lanes. That would be determined later on in the process as the final plans for the site are identified. In addition, it would include conditions that would be extension of five-foot sidewalk along Orchard Court, north along the subject property line, to create that pedestrian connection, and then also reconstructing Orchard Street north of West Benton Street. The conditions were changed a little bit from the way that they were previously constructed from the 2022 conditions, specifically in that staff had previously recommended that the area be resubdivided through the final plat process, and that would be the trigger for ensuring that all these things were done. That requirement has been changed so that instead it is, that the public improvements are installed prior to occupancy, and the recommendation that it be replatted was removed since it's a smaller area as part of this. But we do still have the, the conditions are built upon occupancy. So, based on this analysis, staff does recommend approval of REZ23-0004 to rezon 1.63 acres of property at 614, 622, and 630 Orchard Court, from OPD RS5 to RFCO, subject to three conditions, which is that prior to site plan approval, that the owner must enter into an agreement with the city, providing for the construction of public improvements, or of improvements escrow prior to issuance of a building permit. In cases, however, that the public improvements shall be constructed prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So, those public improvements, like I mentioned, include five-foot sidewalk along the Orchard Street Court frontage of the property, and a location approved by the city engineer, traffic signalization at the corner of West Benton and Orchard Streets, and associated intersection improvements, which may include turn lanes as approved by the city engineer, and then finally reconstruction of Orchard Street and Orchard Court in a manner approved by the city engineer. Now, we did, we did receive some public comments from Paul Swigard. You have those at your desk, I sent them to you in advance, noting that there were some concerns with the proposed rezoning. Staff does believe that our recommendation stands as we have recommended, but upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the public hearing will then be scheduled for consideration by city council, which, based on current council dates, we would anticipate the public hearing being set on August 1st, and August 15th being the first consideration and the public hearing. So, that ends my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have about the proposed rezoning.
Thank you, Kirk. Any questions for staff on this application?
Is there any natural features that separate the area that we're talking about tonight and the single-family homes to the west?
So, there are some existing trees that are there, I believe. Otherwise, it's-
There's a waterway, a little bit of a waterway in there.
There's a waterway further south. I don't believe that it makes it up this far.
Because it's sort of like-
Does?
Yeah, it's like a gully.
So, the waterway makes it up this far, then? So, yes, there is some, some existing features on the site.
Any other questions? Susan?
I have a question. First, I want to say that, at the first time we considered this, I did not know Ryan Wade, who I know a little bit personally, and who was in a business relationship at the time with my son. And so, I didn't know that he was the developer, and so I was certainly not conflicted then. I let Sarah and Ann know about that, and, but that business relationship has now ended amicably, and we're all good, and so I just wanted to be clear about that. Can you point out on the maps again, how much? In the first thing we saw, this is the failed rezoning. So, it's very similar. So, the houses stay on Benton, except for just that little corner, right?
Yes, so, the, the previous rezoning in 2018 would allow for redevelopment of the buildings on Orchard Street, and then also those buildings that don't front Benton. The properties that do front Benton would remain as they're not part of the, either the, the previous rezoning or this rezoning. I guess previous rezonings, since they would have been two rezonings, but-
That was my question.
Any additional questions?
I have none.
Yeah, just got a quick question, just to clarify. I think I understand, but essentially, the difference between this one and the previous request, it's just decoupling the properties to the south from the 1.6 to the north, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, everybody. We will go ahead and open the public hearing on this application. If the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to speak to the commission or address the commission on this, please come forward, state your name and sign in, please.
A little tall. Ryan Wade, we've been working on this property and acquiring this land and working with Jeff Ruone and staff for nearly eight years now, even prior to the 2017 introduction rezoning. Staff understood that we own the majority of these properties at the time, wanted that transition through the Riverfront Crossing Landing, and presented us with the opportunity to work with past staff members, Bob Nicolob and Karen Howard, and kind of work through the process of what that would inquire to have the Orchard District in this. As of last year, we required this section, this portion of land here from a family who we got to know pretty well. His, the family's dad passed away and entrusted the land to them, and they decided to sell it to us. And that's the reason for this rezoning, and that's why we did not rezon this property later on in 2017 and 19, like we did with the other two properties here. Knowing that this, this rezoning here is a straightforward rezoning, we don't have any, any buyer on the line on it. We, we acquired this land, and we paid quite a bit of money for this piece of land here, and we want to see this land developed. We have gone round and round trying to figure out, not figure out, but also talking to Karen Howard and Bob Nicolob, and creating the Orchard District back in the day, and then bringing the opportunity to us to do this. It sounded like a good idea. So, over the years, you know, this is not an OPD rezoning. This is basically a consistent rezoning with what's currently there. With two-thirds of the property here are already rezoned, we developed a portion of this property, almost, what, 20% of the property in Orchard District has been developed already. Right now, I, we're just asking to get it rezoned, so we can move forward with the development on it, and work with staff to create a project down there that's going to be more sufficient and a better project than what we currently have there currently. So, and I know Susan, at one time, you talked about affordable housing. The very first affordable housing, the workforce housing project in Iowa City was my project at 627 Orchard. I want to make, bring that up too, even though that's not part of P&amp;Z, but that's a big point to you. I know you weren't in favor of it last time. So, that's, that's part of the, the agreement with the city that's been agreed to, and that we were part of that process at the time, to bring that 10% affordable housing to, to this market. So, I want to bring that to your attention as well. So, any questions for me on the development?
Any questions for Ryan? From the commission?
Final question. I mean, of course, this is recently visited by aptitude. I mean, are they still in consideration?
They're not in consideration right now. The day after the city council meeting, and then I apologize for their actions here, they, they voided their purchase agreement with us at the time. So, currently, we are not talking to anyone about purchasing this land.
Any questions? Thanks, Ryan.
You bet.
Anyone else would like to address the commission on this application? Ken?
It's Kent Ralston, our traffic planner, so-
I stopped sitting there, so I just looked. Are you just available for a resource, or are you going to? All right, thanks, Kent. All right, second call for anybody who'd like to address the commission on this application. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Motion from Elliott, is there a second? Second, second by Wade. Discussion. Maggie, since you made the motion, you can go first on discussion if you'd like.
Well, I feel the same way I felt the first time, is that it's, it's land that could be better used. It's close to downtown, it's close to the university. You could put more people on it, and potentially, people wouldn't have to have a car, they could walk or bike. I, I just think it's, could be, I just think it's, could be better used.
All right. Chad?
I'm in the same place as I was last time, in favor of this. You know, of course, hopefully, the future development takes in context, the previous feedback, neighborhood feedback on the three different buildings versus the one large building. Kent, thanks for the feedback on the city council. As far as the traffic study, it kind of alleviates the concern or confirms that that portion was already addressed and still in favor of this moving forward.
All right, thank you. For me, I'm a yes on this. I think the two issues I've heard in the past that resonate with me is affordable housing. I think that it's, it's been answered consistent with the current regulations, and the concerns about traffic. I think the signalization takes care of that issue. You know, when lights are coordinated, there's not going to be a problem, and, I mean, the supermajority of the time, so I'm very comfortable with this, so I'm a yes on this.
How has the affordable housing been addressed?
The current, it's addressed with the current ordinance about affordable housing. And that's the only concern we can have. Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
All right.
You're welcome.
Because there is none, right?
Well, there's, there's a code, when you are zoned a Riverfront Crossings district, there is-
10% are fee-in loop.
Right. Code requirement to provide that affordable housing.
I'm going to support this. I think that my concerns, the first time around, we're tearing down what is affordable housing, and, you know, where, how are we going to replace that? That's still a concern. But I think this is an opportunity to relook at it and give the developer a chance to have it all together, zoned right for, for going to potential investors and saying, you know, we've got this zoning, and let's see what we can do with this piece of property now. I do have concerns about the transition, and what it's going to look like, and how it's going to affect the Orchard neighborhood. Before, it just looked like the scale, I know the buildings were only three stories high, but it just looked like they were so intense in there, and then suddenly, you're at single-family, very modest, single-family homes. But, we'll see what happens.
Am I correct that the houses to the west with the zoning there, they could be three stories?
That is correct.
Okay, so, the scale is-
I mean, somebody could tear down those houses on Benton right there in front and build a row of townhouses there that were three stories high. Right now, right?
They're zoned consistent with this.
Really?
I'm at the same place I was at before, and that's, you had affordable housing there, and now you won't have, even though we say that there could be 10%. Right? And that's, of course, there's buses there, and there are people here to work, and it would be so, yeah, anyway, same place.
Totally sympathetic to that, but I would just like to, so everybody knows, this application, from my reading of it, is consistent with the current ordinance that the city has in place. So, all right. So, we have a motion by Elliott, a second by Wade. All those in favor of this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. So, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of meeting minutes to July 5, 2023. Is there a motion for, first off, is there any major additions or corrections to these minutes that anybody'd like to make?
I hope you read them.
I certainly did. I enjoyed the conversation about median and mean. Saying no corrections or additions, there are motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Craig. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes from July 5, 2023, and it looks like you did a stellar job, thank you, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, planning and zoning information. I just have one thing first before I go to Kirk. As everybody knows, on May 2nd, new, new bylaws were adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And under the Articles Section on Election in Terms of Officers, it says, "Officers of the commission shall be elected annually at the first regular meeting in February of each year. Its election of officers shall not be held at such meetings, such elections shall be held as soon thereafter as convenient." So, this, February had already passed by the time the new bylaws were approved. Traditionally, we have vote for new officers in July, so I just want to get a sense of the commission, what they would like to do, or if we could just ask our legal expert of if that, since it was passed, these were approved past February, that that February date means nothing until the next time we come around.
I think that you are a duly-elected officer of this commission, if that's your concern.
I just, my concern is, I just, traditionally, we always vote in July, and I just-
Gosh, you didn't change that aspect of the bylaws, right? I think it's fine.
I just want, if somebody wants there to be election, I want, obviously, I don't care, I would like people to. I just want to make sure that we're always transparent, and we're above board, and everybody has a say, and no one feels like they're not heard.
Is July because you have new people on?
I don't know why July was ever picked, before, it was even before, it's been several different dates.
Why would you want new people-
Usually, July is tied to the fiscal year.
On people they don't know. I mean, February is a better time, but-
July is tied to the fiscal year, usually.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
So, they, do they then take office in February, or do they not take office till the beginning of the fiscal year?
I presume, because it doesn't really say that, that when you're voted, you're it now.
Yeah, it would be the meeting in which it, the election occurs.
All right.
So, if anybody has something-
Short-term.
If they would like, anybody would like to be in election, it's not on the agenda, so I can't really discuss it, I just wanted to bring it up as a sharing of information piece, so people, if they are interested, they can bring that up to Ann to put it on an agenda.
I think February is nice.
All right. All right, thank you. Kirk?
I don't have anything for you, other than I will see you in two weeks. That's about it.
I wanted to share that I got my AARP newsletter today, and there's a big article in there on ADUs. So, and, and it talks, I mean, it's a good, I think they do a good job, you know? They talked about several cities that, that had, were broadening their policies, and what was bad about that, and what was, you know, what the, I mean, it was very similar to our conversation at our last meeting, you know? And the whole owner occupied issue, and the, and the restrictions on building issues, and, and some places, they have to have their own off-street parking, which is obviously a detriment, and they have to have their own, what was it, like, water and sewer line? Is that a requirement here?
That is not a requirement here.
Yeah, I mean, that seems sort of, I mean, ridiculous to me that you would have, you couldn't share, but it was just, you know, it's obviously an issue many, many places. And, you know, a couple, there was a quote from someone who was the president of a homeowners' association, who said, "Well, obviously, we have to control this, and we can't have ADUs everywhere." And it was just like, okay, you know? We're right at that bleeding edge, once again.
AARP usually has a lot of good articles about zoning-
Right.
-because there's pretty strong advocates for walkable and livable communities.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think that this, you know, it started out as an article about, for aging population and, and your relatives, you know? But then it talked about aging population in general, and I can't remember the exact statistics, but a very large percentage of households, I was surprised how high it was, I want to say 40%, but was it really that high? Of, of households are one-person households. I mean, that's, that's a lot of households that are, that need a smaller place to live.
I'll have to read that article.
Yeah.
Sitting on my kitchen table.
Did you get your AARP yet?
Right.
Got it today, too.
Got it today, too.
I've read it.
Any other P&amp;Z information anybody would like to share?
No, I never read it. I think, I think the newsletter is way better than the actual magazine. I almost always read the newsletter, but I don't read the magazine near as religiously. I don't know why.
Jed?
Good.
Okay. Item number seven, the Germant, is there a motion for Germant?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elliot. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of Germant signify by saying aye.
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 So it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.